All right.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
The invocation will be given tonight by Bishop Michael Clark.
Let us bow our heads in the word of prayer. Most gracious Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this another day and this is another evening that we can all gather here together, dear Lord God, knowing that you sit high and you look low. We thank you for the very breath and life and a portion of health and strength that we have to be able to operate the affairs of this county in your righteous name, dear Lord God. We speak peace, love, joy to each and everyone, not only corporately, but those that are dealing with different things individually. May your grace and your spirit continue to rest upon us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Would you remain standing for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Madam Clerk, call the robe.
Each Commissioner report your presence.
Folks, help me out here a moment. Who? No, I have three that call me. We've got a fourth one out. You're here. Okay. All right. Do you, are you showing Commissioner Wright? Okay, all right. We have three absent tonight. Commissioner Boitt, who has sickness in the family, Commissioner Ring, who's out of town, and Commissioner Pomeroy, who is at another engagement tonight. So we have 21 present tonight, but I remind you that for something to be approved, we still need the 13 votes, and for two-thirds, it will still be 16. All right. Commissioner Wynn, were you in the queue? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we approve our agenda, I think we're going to that next.
Pardon?
The approval of the agenda.
That was an act, yes.
I've got a couple of things. First, I'd like to remove 2405-02 from the consent agenda.
2405 what?
02.
02. The nondiscrimination policy?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there objection to this?
That's automatic. We can't define that. Just as a point of view.
You are right, Mr. Becker. We will remove that.
Yes.
I guess, I understand that you can remove something from a consent agenda, the regular agenda, but not just remove it carte blanche altogether.
No, it'll go to the regular.
To the regular agenda. I apologize.
I thought you were just removing it. It was not very clear.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. And then also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add Budget Amendment Number Six to reallocate or transfer the funds in the amount of $200,000 for their library books.
That's been taken care of.
It's already, is it on here already?
It will be.
Okay.
All right. Let's put the let's put the nondiscrimination under legislative. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted some explanation why that was asked for. I'm not ready to vote on that because I didn't hear why it was being asked to be taken off.
A Commissioner doesn't have to give that. Out of courtesy, we've always, you can remove it. So
Without explanation?
He'll tell us at the appropriate time.
But we're going to vote?
It's taken off of the consent agenda, and you will be able to discuss it later and get all your answers.
Because it's on the regular agenda, right? Okay. All right.
All right. We have had that moved to legislative, and without objection, at the request of the Chairman of the Education Committee, we will add Board Amendment Number Six, and I've instructed the Budget Chairman to take this up. That will be handled in his with the other amendments. That will be on the agenda to be approved at the Education Committee Chairman's request, and Budget will bring that up. All right. A motion to accept the consent. Budget.
Okay. Isn't that going to be 2405-35?
Wherever the Budget Chairman wants to do it. Okay. Motion to approve is a second. Who is the second? All right. All in favor say aye. Pose lights sign. We have approval of the minutes for the 15th. Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Approval of minutes for April 29th. All right. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All right. Show Commissioner, Teacher abstaining. Under Report of the Chair, we have Veteran's Service Report that's attached to your agenda. And, pardon me, we forgot a very important part of the agenda, the comments from the public. If Mr. Weiner, if you would hand me that, please. All in favor of the consent agenda? Pose. We have several on the agenda. Now, to move things along, if you happen to be speaking on something that we've added to the agenda, such as the Number Six of the education, we would request that you just save us time and not speak to that tonight. Ron Straw, please give us your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Ron Straw. I stand before you tonight as a nominee for civilian position on the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission. I'd like to thank, first of all, Major Isbell for his nomination, nominating me. I'd like to also thank the Committee on Committees' favorable recommendation. In 1969, I started my education in Sumner County. And as a little boy, I was taught to grow up and be a positive factor, contribute to society, and make a difference. Be productive in the society that we have and leave it better than you found it. Truth, honesty, commitment, and doing the right thing even when no one is around to see. I heard those same words in 1982 as I graduated from high school in Sumner County. Started out at Lakeside Elementary, graduated from Beach Senior High School, and just by coincidence, Mr. Chairman was the principal of both those schools. And sir, I thank you very much.
You're very lucky.
Thirty-two years of service in the military because of these seeds that were planted, ladies and gentlemen, in the Marine Corps, the Army, and the National Guard. A stint with the Department of Justice and the VA, that is what I do. I serve, ladies and gentlemen. What's not on my bio, very quickly, I have three daughters. I have three daughters I'm proud of. All three educated in Sumner County. One takes care of the elderly in Sumner County now. The other one works with handicapped and special needs children in Davison County. I'm working real hard to get her back to Sumner County. And another daughter is the Executive Director of a Ladies Ministries Program out of Nashville, Tennessee. I'm proud of all three of my girls. I have a saying I've always taught them since they were little. Work hard, play hard, serve often. I've added that. When one small door closes, another larger door opens for service. Thank you for your consideration and approval to serve again. Thank you.
Thank you. I had to say, too, he was a very excellent student. Is this John Belcher?
Good evening. My name is John Belcher. I live at 2003 Hawkwell Circle in Hendersonville. And like my predecessor, I have been nominated to become a part of the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission. And I would like to thank Mayor Isbell for his nomination and also for the Committee on Committees for their recommendation of me to this post. I've been a resident of Sumner County for over 50 years. Moved here when I was 13 years old, and I have not found a good enough reason to leave this area yet. I'm very proud of this part of the country. When I moved from Richmond, Virginia, here, I did not want to leave Richmond, Virginia. When I moved down here, after I'd been down here for a couple of months, I was thanking the Lord that I left Richmond, Virginia. Nothing against Richmond. I just loved it here. Absolutely loved it. And Commissioners, if you see it fit for you to approve me, then I promise to serve the people of this county and to serve you. And I'm going to hang around to the end if anybody has any further questions for me. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patricia Smith?
Thank you for adding Amendment Six to the regular agenda.
Thank you. Kay Brooks?
Good evening. My name is Kay Brooks. I live at 123 Trousedale in Hendersonville. I'm here to ask you to vote yes to approve my placement on the library board. Libraries have been an important part of my entire life, since my early days methodically working through biographies in my elementary school. Books have been integral to my life. As a child, during the summers, I haunted the storefront branch blocks away from my home. I volunteered in my junior high school library, and I benefited from a Carnegie Library in my own hometown. Libraries have always been a go-to resource for me and my family. And I'll just throw in here, I do have a library card. I've had one for 10 years since moving to Hendersonville, and it's been well worth what I paid for it. The libraries of Sumner County are a valuable resource and must be well managed. I submitted my name because there was a lack of a quorum at the time, and someone had to step up and fill that need. So I did. The board still has empty seats. I believe that I have skills and experience that will be helpful to ensuring the system is run well. After my stint at Fort Campbell in the U.S. Army, I raised four children while being a statewide education advocate, even testifying before education committees at the Tennessee Legislature. This led to an interim stint on the Metropolitan Nashville Schools Board of Education. Eventually, my hardwired administrative skills led me to work at Vanderbilt Medical Center. I was an administrator overseeing a research section and supporting 11 faculty members and clinical directors. I moved on to Vanderbilt University, working in Kirkland Hall for a vice provost, and eventually as his special assistant when he became dean. My ability to assess situations and create processes and procedures to improve workflow, accountability, and employee experience was finely honed during this time. I consider reading to be essential and a foundation for freedom and independence. I tell the story, well, sorry, and independence, I mean, people being autonomous, able to learn themselves is essential. I believe supporting literacy in Sumner County should be a main focus of our libraries, and it will be a priority for me. I'm excited about the prospect of serving our community, and I ask you to vote for me and approve my appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the next person on the agenda also was a former student of mine, and it's not out of disrespect, but he'll always just be Scott to me. Dr. Langford, you?
I'm good, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to Report of the Chair. Veteran's Service Report, as I said earlier, is attached. Financial Statement Memo is attached, and we have now Certificate of Recognition. And I'll ask the mayor to come forward. He has a mayoral proclamation that he would like to make at this time.
All right. This is proclaiming this month is National Dairy Month, whereas dairy farmers have contributed to the development and well-being of Sumner County, Tennessee, since the earliest formation of Sumner County, Tennessee. And whereas the dairy industry is a major industry in Sumner County, Tennessee, and a significant contribution to the economy of our Sumner County, Tennessee, and whereas milk and dairy foods provide health benefits and valuable nutrients, and whereas real milk and dairy foods are superior to their imitations in quality, value, and taste. Whereas, the 2024 Celebration of National Dairy Month, highlighting the dairy industry, will occur during June 2024. Now therefore be it resolved by John Isbell, Sumner County Mayor of Sumner County, Tennessee, that June is designated to the Celebration of National Dairy Month, and I call upon all government agencies and the people of Sumner County, Tennessee, in order to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Another, this is a mayoral proclamation. The mayor also was a former student of mine. I would like to say just a little bit here about the next one, and if Captain Hurst would come forward and those involved. This is a very special person. I have to tell you, I've worked very close with him in the past, and one of the most dedicated people in law enforcement in Sumner County. We should all appreciate this kind of person carrying the badge. I just had to say that before he came up.
Thank you all for taking a few minutes out of your night tonight to honor Captain Danny Hurst. There's probably hundreds of stories that could be told about him tonight, and 90 of them would make you laugh. But Danny, who, you know, he was Captain Hurst, and now he's going to retire, so now he's Danny. Danny had a profound impact on my career in the law enforcement. He was my training officer when I came in. Danny had a profound impact on almost everyone in Sumner County. If your kids are in Sumner County schools today, they are safer because of this man. This man has forgotten more about school security than most will ever know. This is a good man. Now, whereas Captain Danny Hurst began his exemplary career in law enforcement with the Portland Police Department in June of 1978, before I was born, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to protecting and serving the community. Whereas Captain Danny Hurst began his exemplary career, that's the second paragraph, whereas Captain Hurst commenced his service with the Sumner County Sheriff's Office on September 2, 1994, and has since displayed exceptional leadership and professionalism in various roles, including sergeant, detective, lieutenant, and captain. Whereas Captain Hurst has distinguished himself as an agent with the 18th Judicial District Drug Task Force, demonstrating his expertise in combating drug-related crimes and ensuring the safety of our communities. Whereas Captain Hurst has overseen a multitude of critical functions within the Sumner County Sheriff's Office, including patrol operations, training, court security, animal control, warrants, records, and the School Resource Officer Division. Whereas, under Captain Hurst's leadership, the SRO Division of the Sumner County Sheriff's Office was recognized by the National Association of School Resource Officers as the model SRO Division in the nation, a testament to his exceptional leadership and dedication to ensuring the safety and well-being of students. Whereas Captain Hurst's contributions to law enforcement in Sumner County, the state of Tennessee, and his impactful efforts on a national level are invaluable and deeply appreciated. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Commission that we extend our sincerest gratitude and appreciation to Captain Danny Hurst for his decades of dedicated service to the citizens of Sumner County and the state of Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the Sumner County Commission do hereby gift his badge and service weapon as additional compensation. Be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and presented to Captain Danny Hurst in recognition of his retirement with our best wishes for fulfilling a well-deserved career.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I have nothing prepared to say tonight. I just want everybody to know that now, as a citizen of Sumner County, I am so proud of our Sheriff's Office. I've been around a long time, and I've never seen it as good as it is right now. And I appreciate for all the support you give the Sheriff's Office, and hopefully in the future with leadership of people such as Chief Craddock, that it will continue, and I know it will. And just want you to know that all officers' hearts are in the right place. They want to serve you and protect you. Thank you.
Danny, since we didn't call your family up to begin with, would you introduce us?
Absolutely. I've got a couple beautiful daughter-in-law right here. My son Danny, my son Ethan, my daughter Daniel, my grandson, of course, my wife.
At this time, our clerk will read a public notice.
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on May 20, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building, located at 355 North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Scotty Parker Storage PUD Amendment 1. Michael Bartley, represented by Green LID Design, 7th Commission Voting District, Danny Sullivan, applicant is seeking a major plan amendment of an existing PUD for the purpose of adding two new buildings and associated improvements to the site. Subject property is located at 1618 Scotty Parker Road, Gallatin, Tennessee, 37066, is part of Tax Map 104, Parcel 005.01. Contains 5.49 acres and is zone rural residential. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation related to this item on February 20, 2024. A copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department in the Sumner County Administration Building, located at 355 North Belvedere, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest or desiring to ask questions concerning this request is invited to attend this meeting or call 615-451-6097. Persons wishing to speak on an agenda item shall sign up for public comment on the sheet provided at the meeting immediately prior to the commencement of the meeting.
Seeing no one signed up to speak, I close this hearing, and I'll ask for a motion to approve. Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose lights sign. Unanimous. The report of the county officials are filed with you, and at this time, I'll ask the clerk to put the notaries on the board for election.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
We have 21 people voting in the affirmative, so the notaries do pass. Now we will have the report of the standing committees. And the first will be Health and Emergency Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 2405-17 is asking for
Uh, twenty-four oh five dash seventeen is asking for approval of the ECD and the MOU between, obviously, Sumner County and Gallatin to add a tower, or, excuse me, add an antenna to the ECD towers, and with that, I so move.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like, say nay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Twenty-four oh five dash eighteen is an approval of donation of an ambulance to Vol State Community College. Just so we're clear and transparent on the record, I do work for Vol State Community College, but this in no way has a bearing on my position there. With this, um, it is a surplus ambulance that the county has, uh, was not in service. I think the mayor, uh, has the title, so we're asking that this be donated, donated to Vol State so the students can train on it, and with that, I so move.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like, say nay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Education Committee? All right, thank you. General Operations Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, uh, request by the Highway Department to, uh, sell two backhoes that have lived a good life but are ready to move on. Uh, so this is a resolution twenty-four oh five dash nineteen declaring two backhoes from the Sumner County Highway Department as surplus property and authorizing disposal or sale of same pursuant to existing policies and procedures, and I so move.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like, say nay. Highway Committee?
Mr. Chairman, we did not meet because, uh, all the, all the flooding and all the storms, but I just gotta say that, uh, I think that anybody gets a chance, needs to thank Toby Ellis and the Highway Department. They did an amazing job, and it just blows me away still how much they cleared out in just no, no time at all, so I want to thank them for that, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Self Insurance Board? And I think that would be Commissioner, uh, Boitt. Uh, who is vice chairman of our group? Is that you, Bob?
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, to approve the Law Director to settle all the, uh, cases that we have impending as far as liability, up to sixty thousand dollars. I so move.
All right, motion made. All right, the attorney wants to make a comment here before we go any further.
I, I want to be clear, this is on a very specific case, and, uh, I do have that information if we need to have executive session, but this does not give me the authority for anything beyond this one case that the committee's already approved me up to fifty. It's just, uh, that ten extra is, uh, what I think's gonna bring it home.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, I missed you in the queue. Commissioner, in.
I'd like to request executive session. I have no information on this request or any of the background, uh, so I'd prefer to have that before asking, being asked to be, to vote.
All right, um, I think if one person asks for an executive session, I really think we should. Is there any objection to an executive session? All right. Uh, I will ask that, uh, the audience, the deputies, uh, probably move everyone probably to the rotunda for just a few minutes. All right, we are back in session. Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this sixty thousand dollar.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like, say nay. Committee on Committees?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll say it was brought up asking a question about people who have applied for boards and committees, and, um, I've not had a chance to, to compile any kind of list or anything yet, but I, you know, citizens have asked me about who, or commissioners, who's been appointed to the Planning Commission that we haven't seen, and all these other boards and committees, and so, um, I guess I'm, I'm gonna try to make it a challenge for the committee, uh, to work with the Law Director's Office, uh, County Mayor's Office, and County Clerk on, to try to figure out, not single out one committee, but let's look at all the appointments that have been made and try to figure out where, i- if there's a complaint about people, I guess, because they're not getting picked, um, so you can know, in all fairness, uh, for other boards, I'm just, I, I know people, it came up about the Planning Commission, so, um, that is not something I've been able to divert my attention to under the budget process, so, um, I, I just think that was, uh, if we're gonna be fair or ask of something of one, we need to ask it of all the processes, so, uh, I think that'd be a way of approaching that. Uh, so, that being said, uh, we did actually have a, uh, two members for the Regional Planning Commission put board forward by the County Mayor, uh, Mr. John Belcher and Mr. Ronald Strahl, and, uh, I so move to approve.
Motion and a second, and seeing no one, well, um, we do have the County Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, uh, as the members of this commission consider Mr. Straw and Mr. Belcher for the Planning Commission, I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Commissioner Mansfield for allowing these candidates through his committee. While I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Mansfield's stance on unilaterally disqualifying citizens for service because they work in the real estate industry, the banking industry, the building industry, the mortgage industry, and affiliated industries, as well as supporters of my campaign or investors in my campaign, I do appreciate his passion for service. Having said that, I'm a bit perplexed on why individuals from these industries would be disqualified from service while the commission allows Commissioner Miller, a successful real estate agent, to serve on the very same committee. It is the commissioners' belief that any appointment should avoid the very hint of financial opportunity or collusion with the industries represented by the Planning Commission. Therefore, I believe it is hypocritical to hold such, hold fast such a rigorous strength, stance while allowing friends.
Mr. Mayor. We, we're to vote on these two people, and I don't want to be rude or intervene in what you're saying, but I would not want Mr. Mansfield to start any kind of tirade, uh, either. If we can just move to these two people, I appreciate what you've said, but, uh, let's refrain from attacking an individual commissioner. I would ask that commissioners not attack the mayor in a public meeting like this, but if we can, if your comments can, uh, uh, be drawn down to the extent of endorsing these two people, I would appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, uh, we have, uh, two names before us.
We had a motion and a second already.
All right, and we have a motion and a second, and, uh, Mr. Becker?
Uh, yeah, I'm just curious, I, I, I don't know if it's in the packet, I apologize. Is, is this two spots, is that full after this? Are, are these the only two openings, is my question?
The Committee on Committees would know.
It's full.
It's full.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, put it on the board, Madam Clerk. Yes. Yeah, she's, she's got it. Yes.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
With seventeen affirmative votes, that passes. All right, Commissioner Mansfield?
Library, Library Board of Trustees, Kay Brooks, for a three-year term, and I so move.
Uh, motion's been made, and a second, Commissioner Becker?
Fill the library board spots, or if not, how many more are there, spots?
What is the, uh, what are the openings on the library board?
Um, I believe there are three, if I'm not mistaken.
Open?
Yes, after this.
Just three?
After this.
I believe so, I'm not sure.
So that's, make sure I understand, so that's this one plus three more, or this one and two more?
It, it's three after this one.
Okay. And may I ask? I can't, is it, was it Pam Teller? I know there was a, another individual last month that got approved, and two months ago, my timing may be off, I think Ms. Bordeorf was, was it included? I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember the reasoning why we're doing one at a time here versus, uh, six or whatever the, the total numbers were, five or six?
Uh, I really don't know the answer to that, but personally, I'd like for it to be, um, you know, carefully cultivated, and, uh, I, I'm glad they're taking time and filling the positions, but, uh, that'd be up to the committee.
Can, can we ask the chairman just to? Might, can I, can I ask you to ask the chairman?
Do you want to respond? You don't have to. Do, would you like to respond to that?
I have no response.
Uh, Commissioner Teichner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm on that committee, and that's why, I just thought it was okay. I, I think the reason why is because I, I felt that we should, we were being asked by the commission as a whole to be just more meticulous and just more one-on-one. And I, I felt that we had three really great candidates a few, few months ago, and they all got shot down, and I think that maybe you could say the same thing if they all got voted in. It's like, it's the three at, at one time, and I think that the due diligence is just because we respect the, the rest of the commission, we want to do the job right. That hasn't been said out loud, but that's the way it feels, just, just the way, that's the way I'm voting whenever I'm bringing up one person. I almost brought up two this time, but I, I just kept it back because no one supported it, and, uh, I just think that it's, it's wise to go one at a time and careful, uh, out of respect for our fellow commissioners, and that way we can, we can take time on it, and it's not too much overwhelming to try to maybe seek out and call that individual at a time, so that's the reason why.
All right, Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, so just to make a comment, I, I, I supported the previous two nominees. I, I'm not gonna be able to support the one tonight, though, so, uh, I just, uh, you know, social media type of thing, I, I've, I've seen, seen things out on social media that just caused me pause for this individual, so, um, so I just wanted to mention that while I'll be voting no.
Commissioner Jones?
When I was, um, campaigning for this position, I knocked on just about every conservative voter's door in my district, and one thing that rang clear was they all wanted conservative leadership in every position that they could possibly have any influence over, and I made them that promise that I would do that, um, to vote for conservative leadership in any committee, any kind of decision-making possible, the most conservative person that was available at the time. So I will be, um, voting for Ms. Brooks.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman, uh, after the last month's meeting, I did go home and make some notes, uh, about library appointment, um, one of the things that was said, I think, last month was that we're all getting the emails of- all getting the emails of applicants. I'm not. I am getting some emails of those that the committee on committee are recommending, but I have personally made recommendations to Chairman Mansfield and have never heard anything back. So, you know, regardless of motives or lack thereof, or public perception in this process, is, there's, there's a lot of transparency, there's just a public perception that this is dirty. So if this application, if this, if this recommendation does not go through, I would really like to see an ad hoc committee formed with some individuals who can settle this once and for all. This is, this has been a nightmare.
All right, Commissioner Brown.
Call the question.
All right, the, Mr. Mansfield, did you still want to speak, or you want to just call the question?
Motion and a second, I'm not going to vote for it.
All right, okay. This will be on the board for you to vote on. Are you ready, Madam Clerk? All right. All right, we do have a motion and a second. Yes, this is called for the question. All right, all in favor say aye. Pose light sign.
No.
Okay. Let's put that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, that's going nowhere fast. All right, we are still in session, and we hate Commissioner Mansfield that wanted to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question was asked, respectfully, I have to disagree with my fellow commissioners saying this is a dirty process. I'm going to read the committee summary that's predated my time on this commission in 18, that the previous commissioner was here before here. It's an explanation of the committee on committees, and I've emailed this to the entire commission as well, when this commissioner asked this question, what the process was. Says the purpose of the committee on committees shall be to make recommendations and nominations to the county commission for membership on all committees, subcommittees, boards, or commissions elected by the commission, and for all other positions which are filled by election by the commission. To say that this process has not been transparent is just abjectly false, and here's the reason why. When I first got on the commission, Mr. Chairman, committee on committees met the night of the commission meeting at 6:30 PM with a predetermined list that was never screened, no applicants, never, no meetings recorded, no audio available, nobody knows what happens, nobody knows anything about the previous multiple commissions on committee on committees. So one thing that we did when we came in is we moved committee on committees a week earlier, so that we'd have time for citizens to review somebody who might be put up as a name for a matter of transparency, so that it's done a week ahead of time and not the night of, so that you can research, object, citizens have time to come up and speak in approval of or rejection of, as they're right, as a transparent process. Additionally, if the commissioners might remember the little thing about in 18, when I got elected, we did not have county email addresses, and I was advised by the county law director at the time not to get a county email address so that I could avoid open records requests. So one thing that I fought for, along with Commissioner Mo Taylor, and I appreciate your support, Commissioner, Chairman Hahn, was to get countywide email addresses, which took almost a year, so that citizens could pull public records requests on who might be applying for things and positions and boards. So it's extremely disingenuous and offensive to say it's not a transparent process, in all honesty. So also, I'll remind this commission, that I was Commissioner Mo Taylor myself, who fought for two, almost three years, to have committee meetings recorded so that citizens could watch the deliberations that took place. I know for a fact, I was told that the previous county mayor and the previous commission, they intentionally sent those Allen devices in to say that they were broken, just so they can get an invoice to keep me from recording committee meetings so that citizens could know what was happening in this process. So if you want to talk about lack of transparency, it's the previous commissions that I fought against. So as far as this process, we've had tons of emails to the main commission email address. If there have, there have been people put forward since this process since September 2022, any other emails that I might have, I said to begin this process, I was asked by Commissioner Becker for the planning commission, I don't have that because I don't make those appointments, and that would be great to get from the county mayor's office. So as far as being transparent and trying to put things out there, I disagree, I think we have done exactly that. Now, what it comes down, what I'm hearing is, people are crying because they didn't get picked. Now, that's a different story altogether. Because, and you want to talk about inflammatory comments on social media, all these people who are crying because they didn't get picked or lack of transparency are saying the most nasty, offensive, defamatory comments, not only about myself, but private citizens, other county commissioners in these emails. And I'll tell you, I will not vote for a single one of those people because they don't deserve a spot on the library board, because they don't represent their community well, and how they attack people in that manner. Now, if you're talking about a social comment of somebody talking about people being groomed for porn in libraries, I don't necessarily disagree with those comments. I know that the Gallatin Library was going to have a transgender story hour until a citizen got involved, who's been speaking up at these meetings, to stop it before it really got started. I know there's people who email this commission saying transparency, transparency, or they want to be on the library board, who support transgender story hour in our public libraries. That is not our community values, and I will not apologize for not putting somebody forward who has emailed us. I am one person. I have a committee of four of the people who put people forward. We discuss things. Anything that has come before me, I've always shared with my committee members. Every single email that I've gotten, or if somebody brings a resume to me, I've emailed the committee members, even if it hasn't gone to the full commission. But again, I'm going to restate the committee process, and I don't remember this ever happening at the previous commission, because it didn't happen. So the purpose of the committee on committee shall be to make recommendations and nominations to the county commission for membership on all committees, subcommittees, boards, or commissions elected by the commission, and for all other positions which they are filled by the election of, by the commission. As I said, I'm happy to investigate and try to find out who these people are. I'm happy to try to go investigate who prior people, I would like to know who I was denied the opportunity to know who was on what list, because I didn't get to see the rejection list. I didn't get to see it. I know Chairman Hahn didn't get to see it. So, that's my point, but that's the process. It gets to a point where Albert Einstein said-
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, and I, I've gone here for a bit, because I mean, I understand Mr. Mansfield responded to an accusation against him, I get it, but we're on one individual, and I just think we should return to this one individual.
I would like to, we've done, I want to commend everybody. You've done fairly well toward moving along tonight and conducting the business of the county, so if you could bring your remarks to a close, we are on a specific nomination.
I'll, I'm done.
And anyone else, it would be good if you could refrain from comments that are pretty much redundant. Commissioner Teichner?
Yes, Mr. Hahn, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say really quickly, and I'll keep it short, and I believe it does pertain to this because it always comes to a sticking point. And I, it saddens me that any of us 24 have social media. And it saddens me honestly that there's a lot of it going on, because I know that there's a lot of good that comes from that, but there's a lot of bad. And I'm not, I'm not throwing shade or anything like that, but I just, I feel like that we need to get past a point of thinking that any one of us is doing anybody dirty, because I feel like that everybody's heart overall is in the right place. It hurt me whenever I just heard dirty, because I'm on the committee on committees. But if that's the way it seems, I apologize for that. But I know I'm not dirty on those, my hands are clean on that. But I will say that it's very important to me that, that we realize that, and I know that I've had commissioners who I really respect, like I really respect Commissioner Becker-
Let's try to bring this back to this nomination.
Yes, I was just going to say, I just would like to just, I would like to request the opposite of what was said by Mr. Mansfield and Mr. Becker. I don't think we need to do the whole, every board, because it's very important, and I know it's point of order, I know.
Yeah, let's try to bring it to debate on this nomination.
I just, my last thing, I promise. I just wish we could get to the point where we make the main thing the main thing, instead of us always getting so upset at each other. We need to stop the division and figure out how we're going to vote on whoever it is and vote them up or down. But I think that everybody's trying to do their job here, and I just, I just want to state that, that we need to stay off social media and get on the people's side again.
Now, that, now that may be a good idea. Commissioner Becker?
Just a couple points. I would like to, I'll say vouch or whatnot. What Mr., what Commissioner Mansfield mentioned about the transparency of the previous commissions and so forth, in particular to the email addresses, the videos, 100%, you know, some of y'all may think he's not accurate on that, but, but it is 100% accurate on that. So I just wanted to, I'll use the word vouch from that standpoint. And concerning this specific nominee, I personally like this nominee as a person. I got to know her a little, well, she used to be in my district, so got to, she no longer is, but got to know her a little bit. I think honestly, for me, and I'm looking back over the 10-plus years, whatever I've been on the committee or the commission, I don't recall, of course, I don't recall what happened this morning, but I don't recall any committee being this visible or this controversial or whatnot. And so from my standpoint, in all honesty, this candidate, if I saw a list of, this candidate may be the top of my list, but I don't, because it's so visible and we're getting just so many, you know, emails about it, I just don't know if, without knowing who else may or may not be out there, I, that's, I just can't vote for it tonight. So again, she may be the best one, I just, just don't have that information.
Okay, we only have two people left in the queue. I'm sure hopeful we, one left, so we have one person in the queue. I think we have said everything that needs to be said, Commissioner Janon? Commissioner Schmidt, I'm sorry.
You know, I like Ms. Kay Brooks. She would be someone I consider a friend, but friends protect friends. And I'm not going to go off too much into the weeds with this, and we'll keep this short and sweet. Speaking of defamation of character, speaking of using, making false accusations, I experienced that, and I'm going to leave it at that, because anyone that's followed me or seen that will know what I'm talking about. So what I'm afraid of is that this friend of mine would be dragged into another political pissing contest. So I think Commissioner Becker made a good point, and when he said about the social media, that came to mind, because up until that happened to me, and has happened to a lot of other people that I'm finding out this weekend from school board candidates that are family men and women, that have been falsely accused of different things. So, no. Okay, well, finally, I am just going to abstain from this vote, because she is a friend of mine, and she's a good person personally, but I think we need an ad hoc committee for this library. I did not want it to come to that, but there's been enough concerns from citizens. I've had more concerns on emails from citizens on why not to appoint this tonight than for it. So that's, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Remember, folks, we'd probably be already out of this meeting if we stuck strictly to the item on which we're speaking. So please remember what we're talking about when you want to speak. Commissioner Janon?
Thank you, Chairman. I serve on the committee on committees, and of the times I've served on the committee, we have been giving information about individuals to be on certain committees, and particularly the library committee. They've brought them forward, we've called each and every one of them, we've vetted them, I have, I know my other commissioners have, and we voted to bring Kay Brooks forward. She has, from listening to her tonight, she has a stellar background, but I will say, from someone who has been attacked on social media and has been sued in federal court, that I will tell you that you need to stay the hell off of social media, because it's not your friend. And this is not where we make our nominations off of, is social media. We need to look at the person's background and look at what they can do for the library board, and I will rest my case there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, please put this on the board before anyone else requests to speak.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Two abstentions, nine noes, 10 yes, the nomination fails. All right, anything else, Commissioner Mansfield? All right, legislative committee?
Resolution 2405-21, amend standing rules and procedures to comply with TCA 5-9-407, I so move.
All right, motion and a second. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Resolution 2405-22, rescind resolution 2304-18 and adopt voluntary tax act for property located at 2268 State Route 25, Cotton Town, Tennessee, I so move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to read just what the original amendment was that was originally voted on and passed. That's in the minutes from the April 17th meeting, as well as on the video. But it's, be it further resolved, no funding outside this designated fund is to be used to repair, improve, maintain, or secure these buildings located at 2268 State Route 25, Cotton Town, Tennessee, 37048. So whenever we were debating this back last year, we were all assured several times that zero taxpayer dollars would be used on the repair, maintenance, improvement, or security of the buildings on this property, and that there was a 501(c)(3) that was ready, willing, and able to assume all the financial responsibility for the repair, improvement, maintenance, and security of these buildings. And that's why that got into the, the amendment was made. So when it was asked during the same meeting about the county's plans or intentions for this property, we had no answers, zero answers, as to what we even want to do with it as a county property. We didn't have any answers for estimated long-term maintenance cost, none for any financial exposures to the taxpayers. You know, just had no idea as to what we were actually going to do with these buildings. You know, it was pointed out that the house is located in the flood zone. That point was disputed, and, you know, surprise, it was flooded last week. But who would have guessed? And the question was, at the meeting, was who would be responsible for any damage or expense as a result of flood damage? And no answer was given. We had no answer. I hadn't even thought about it. So I, I think since we're now walking back our commitment to not use taxpayer dollars on, on the buildings, that we have no idea that we want to do, what we want to do with them. And before we essentially just open up the coffers to, to make repairs to these buildings, then I think we ought to know what are our plans? What are we planning to do with these buildings? You know, we were told after the property was approved to be pulled off of the FEMA grant, that as a commission, we would evaluate our plans through the committee system, starting in gen ops, for what we want to do with the property. That was on April 17th, 2023. So it's over a year ago, and we still don't have an answer, because we haven't taken any steps to make a determination concerning anything about these properties, these valued and cherished historic properties. And now, without doing any due diligence again, we're ready to change a resolution that essentially protects the taxpayer's wallet and holds other people accountable to their- and holds other people accountable to their commitments, and, and we're gonna walk that back. I, I do find it ironic that there are, are some on this commission who will scrutinize every penny, every penny, budgeted for our schools, and demand we see plans improved before taking any action. But here we are, and we don't know, again, what we wanna do with this, these buildings, with this property. So the resolution's being rescinded, it protects the taxpayers, and it does hold people accountable to commitments they make. So I, I would just ask that we, we not rescind this original resolution, and that we actually correct the verbiage in the original resolution to what was approved during our April 17th commission meeting in 2023. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to make an amendment to the resolution that we're looking to approve, to insert the language that was originally approved by this commission.
Would you read that?
"Be it further resolved, no funding outside this designated fund is to be used to repair, improve, maintain, or secure these buildings located at 2268 State Route 25, Cotton Town, Tennessee, 37048."
Uh, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. The discussion now will be on the amendment, and Commissioner Shoef, is this on the amendment or not? Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think the intent of this is to allow the county to mow the property. So, um, I mean, if Mr. Nguyen and I could go out and mow it ourselves, uh, or we can go ahead and just allow this to happen, so that, uh, we can, we can mow the property. That's what this is for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Janon?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, on Mr. Nguyen's information, I'm a little confused. So he doesn't want the money that's in that, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand, the voluntary tax to, um, they're asking for it to be able to be used, the county to help, and then he wants to put back no, that only they can do it. And so to me, that kinda says, well, if, for some reason, I guess, maybe there's a little something to this, that if they can't do things that are, for example, a, a major repair, do we just let the Draper House just fall down and let the termites eat it? I mean, what, what's the scoop here? I'm trying to understand, Mr. Nguyen.
It's okay to...
Is that rhetorical, or are you wanting an answer?
I'm just asking a question. I mean, is, is the intent of the amendment to keep them from...
Using the money? Is the intent to keep the money in the bucket and not be used for anything outside? No one else can help, other than this voluntary tax group? Is that the intent of the amendment? I'm just trying to make so clear here.
Would you clarify your intent?
Yeah, it, it's the same question that was asked last year at this time, and, and it's gonna be the same answer that it was last year. The Voluntary Tax Act is there, i- is, is the, the fund for the 501(c)(3) to donate money, or anybody donating money through that, that fund, uh, that the 501(c)(3) is gonna oversee. Uh, it would not preclude those funds from being used to, uh, repair, improve, maintain, or secure the buildings, uh, as was originally communicated. Uh, also too, it does not preclude the county from taking care of the grounds. Uh, the, 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 the original amendment states the buildings, not the property, the buildings. So the, the property can be mowed, the, the tree repair can be done, there's, there's nothing that, that precludes us from doing that or stops us from doing that. It's specific to the buildings. Uh, and we were assured, and I went back and reviewed the, the meetings today, just to make sure that, uh, my recollection was correct, but we were assured that, that the 501(c)(3) would take care of the grounds. And, and now we're backing that up. But that, this amendment doesn't prevent the county from, from taking care of the grounds, it's only spending money on the buildings.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it was my understanding, I sit on General Operations, it's my understanding that, uh, we did this to allow for a tree branch that was getting ready to fall on the house, uh, from, from falling. We were trimming the tree, we were doing work on the property with grounds, maintenance, with cutting grass, and things of that nature, and we realized we were not in compliance with our own resolutions. So that's why we amended the resolution to, to say what it says. There was no nefarious intentions involved. Um, this put us in compliance with it. The 501(c)(3) did everything that they said that they were gonna do, they raised the money, they fixed the roof, they secured the locks on the building, they did exactly what they said they were gonna do with the money that they raised. If another need rose up, I'm sure we could present it to them, and they would do the same for that.
Uh, Commissioner Harrison?
I also sit on the General Operations Committee, and I raised the point in committee that the resolution that the mayor signed was actually not what we passed in April of last year. The language was incorrect. I don't know how it got lost in translation, but whatever happened, what was signed was incorrect. My recommendation was, and still is, fix the resolution that we passed and have the mayor sign it. And somehow it came up, well, we're amending, that's not what we're doing. We're just producing the correct resolution. To, uh, the commissioner's point about the nonprofit, the nonprofit has raised a grand total in a year of $3,000. I've got the floor, Commissioner. What they're finding out, it is very difficult, especially in inflationary times, to raise money for an old house that has no real significant historical value. Now, I'm not talking about the post office. The post office, there was a plan in place to move it. This commission voted to do away with the abatement project. That's fine. We still need to move the post office. We're not talking about the bridal house that is a historical, on the historical register. We're talking about an old house. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shoef, uh, Minz, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty much my understanding of last year, the, uh, it was a mistake to vote for the amendment, in my opinion, because it did restrict and bind us and keep us from doing simple things like cutting a tree limb down and technically mowing the yard, is my understanding. So all this was is a, a request, I believe by Commissioner Klein, uh, in order to, um, take care of these needs, which was what the original, uh, could've done there as well. But I would like to address, I guess maybe have the law director, if, if, if you could ask him to address this, whatever this circular argument is over language and the exact, uh, specifics of it, versus how the process going from, um, the, the video and the minutes aren't out, the law director puts forward language, in my understanding, is pretty much in the, in spirit of what was said. It wasn't like the exact A, N, and V in there, but, um, what was said was there. Um, and then the, the county mayor signed it, but there was really no issue as far as the interpretation, a reasonable interpretation, it was the same meaning, and it still had the same restrictions and, and bindings. But I would like, since it was brought up, have the, uh, county law director explain that process, um, because it was just kind of a weird, nonexistent circular argument, in my opinion, but I, I would like to hear that. But I'll also just state that I have no problem supporting the citizens who have asked for these properties of, of historic and cultural significance to them. Um, obviously, the community center was torn down egregiously, uh, for no reason. Uh, we found out, um, citizens were in uproar. What the citizens wanna do with it, what we wanna do with it, if we wanna reapply for the abatement program, if we wanna tear it down, if we wanna give to the citizens, that is definitely up to this body to decide. Um, and so, but there's been so many false and egregious things said about this process out there, and you have a community that seems somewhat, two different sides and opinions. Um, so I, I'm not seeing it come from, for General Ops either, but I know this commission has dealt with a lot of other things, such as bleachers falling and all kind of other emergencies or, or things. So I can anticipate things have gotten a little bit put to the back burner when it comes to two properties that, um, don't flood any more than the other property when it rains, and so there's nothing specific about it. But I don't know of these houses flooding necessarily, or the bridal house flooding, um, in the last rains. But to attribute a, a one-time regional event to normal flooding is, is totally different. Um, but I digress, but I would like to know the law director's opinion on that or the process, because I heard that debated around, and it just didn't make any sense to me, so. If, if he's amenable to that.
Mr. Attorney.
When we were in committee, it became, uh, uh, what was the path of least resistance, and this resolution is that path of least resistance? It keeps in play everything that was discussed as far as the last resolution, with the only caveat being the last be it therefore, which gives the county the ability to address any emergency issues. Uh, I was unaware until it came up, we had been doing maintenance, such as mowing anyway on that facility. So it's merely an attempt to address any emergencies. Uh, this branch was a hazard and could've caused some structural damage to the property. And that's, that's the only reason we're here today on the resolution worded the way it is. Because if we go the other route, it's to get, and I believe, this is an intent versus verbatim issue as far as the prior resolution. Minutes don't get generated until, uh, after I'm required to have this stuff turned in and signed by the, uh, mayor. And albeit it's my fault that it's not verbatim, but it, the intent was there. I don't think there's any deviation from what was said as far as the intent goes. But to, to make that change, to get that back under there for the mayor to sign, to turn right around, and add this other clause at a later date, where we would've just been jumping through hoops and committees just to get that one caveat added to this, so this was the path of least resistance.
Commissioner Shoef?
Call question.
All right. Put that on the board, though.
Each commissioner records her vote.
This is on the amendment. All right. I'm for it, if it'll speed things along. 14 to 7. All right, we will vote now on this matter. Put that on the board. Would you restate that, Commissioner Mansfield? Commissioner Nguyen?
So before I restate the, the amendment, um, there was a lot of words said about the spirit, and, and... I'm gonna read it, but there were some misstatements made about the spirit.
No, let's stick strictly to the question for Clark, because...
"Be it further resolved, no funding outside this designated fund is to be used to repair, improve, maintain, or secure these buildings located at 2268 State Route 25, Cotton Town, Tennessee, 37048."
All right, this is a vote on the amendment, and I've asked the clerk to put it on the board.
Each commissioner records her vote.
That fails. So we're back to the main motion. And seeing no one else in, uh, Commissioner Rogers?
No one else in queue, sir.
All, all right, uh, let's, uh, place that on the board.
Each commissioner records her vote.
14 to 7, uh, it passes. Commissioner?
Resolution 2405-23 is to exempt certain non-economically viable parcels from being brought, uh, brought in by the county. Uh, my understanding from legislative on this, um, was simply that, um, there are parcels that the county commission has just taken on automatically by default. And the intent here is to, to not take on, um, properties that are no, of no value, and if somebody's not basically bidding on them, uh, that we won't take them on. Uh, there was a, a statement that was incorrectly made during the Legislative Committee, uh, by a citizen, that there is a 10-year window, and that's a state statute for any judgment on like a tax lien or any kind of monetary thing. But after that 10 years, um, it's all, not all like this, the tax lien that's on this property, uh, is just gone. What happens is the oldest year rolls off and the newest year rolls on, and that 10 years just keeps moving. So if, if there's a 10-year process on a piece of property, it's a triangle corner that's a, I just, I hate to say junk property, but it's like swamp, and some developer doesn't want it, and they're just trying to offload it on the county, and we've gotta maintain it to be allowable for it for some kid. It just keeps us out of liability issues from remediation for any kind of, uh, contamination, contaminations, or, um, things like that. So it's, it's, I, I support this, and, but I just wanna kind of explain, and, and explain misstatements that were incorrectly made about this, so. I so move.
All right, motion and a second, seeing no one in the queue, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights, then.
There was, I think, 2405-02, which is the approved the Sumner County nondiscrimination policy. Um, I'm gonna move to amend this. Um, there are two mistakes on this, I think, just typos. Uh, one is in the title, uh, when it, the third line, um, it should say national origin, O-R-I-G-I-N. And the second part of my amendment is the first be it resolved paragraph, that this body does hereby is, is repeated twice, and I would like to strike that, and first, that this body does hereby, and I so move.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights, then. Let's take 10 minutes. 10 minutes, no more.